This conference will now be recorded.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one on the agenda tonight is consent agenda items, approving minutes, and bills paid.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to accept the consent agenda items. A second.
We have a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call roll?
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Yes.
Item two is request or comments from the public. If we have anyone from the public who would like to leave a comment or give us comments tonight, your comments will be limited by three minutes. Before you start, please list your name and your address. Once you have about 30 seconds left, I'll give you a signal so you know when to start wrapping it up. And I'd just like to give people a reminder when we have folks here that we can't respond to any comments this evening as we're not adding anything to the agenda. We're here to listen to you, and if we can follow up, we'll usually instruct staff to do that later. Would anyone like to share with us this evening?
Good evening. Thank you to the mayor and city council for your work for our community. I'm Bill Miller. I'm a best member of St. Martin in the Fields Church, 1500 Edwardsville Drive. And our church owns property that borders Stony Point Cemetery. And for many years, we've had kind of a handshake agreement with the city to allow access for maintenance through there and stuff. So we were approached here over a year ago about kind of formalizing this agreement, and the city requested that we set aside 2.5 acres, which is kind of, there's a little creek that runs down through there, but it's right off Edwardsville Drive, and provides good access to the cemetery. So we agreed to that. You know, we said we'd be happy to do that for fair market value. And so the city asked, is it okay to go ahead and with the replat? And we said sure. And so I know that the replat was done. I don't know whether it's ever been filed. I've been talking to Mark about it. And we don't, we aren't sure that it was ever filed with the county, but it's all there. It's ready to go. It would provide good access to the cemetery. It's a beautiful plot of land as well. Would be a nice little park at some point perhaps. But so we're just kind of looking for a little further word from the city about what their intentions are for this project and looking for a little clarity and guidance about how to move forward. So we look forward to working with the city to get this project done and to provide good access and continue to maintain the Stony Point Cemetery in good order. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, hi. My name's Teresa Bolton. I'm with the NAACP. I'm the membership chairperson and the secretary. And Bill is speaking on behalf of what we were going to discuss. We just wanted to be able to have you put it on the agenda so we can see where we're going forward with the cemetery in respect to the African-Americans that are buried there. And my understanding is that there's not a walkway to the graveyard either. We haven't visited this since May when Zach Daniel had did a presentation on one of our Zoom calls, and it was supposed to have been kept up, but I understand he's not here. We haven't heard any word on this until most recently. So we just want to kind of just follow up and just make sure that the ground's respected and the church is respected and whatever we need to do to help.
Could you list your address, please?
My?
Address?
The, like, my home address?
Sure, yeah. We just, at the beginning, for record, keep getting.
Oh, yes. 111 North Nacone, Bonner Springs, Kansas, 66012.
Teresa Bolton.
And Aleah Jarrett is the president of the NAACP, and she may want to speak as well.
When she's finished, we'll, we'll have you.
Yeah, that's a.
Bill, did you have anything else in regards to, because we're kind of in the dark on?
Not really. I was down there the other day after church and just kind of looked around and took a few pictures. For many years, the cemetery was kind of abandoned and neglected, but it's in better shape today than it has been for quite a while. And we just wanted to see the progress continue to be made. Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aleah Jarrett, 323 North Nacone in Bonner Springs, your neighbors. Three minutes is not really a lot to what we're going through. We'll take an agenda review, hopefully, and we'll be able to get a hold of the minutes and some of the other summaries. It's the historical, the black, the colored, whatever title it's holding at this time. We'd like for the council to look into the progress and just the states of where several issues are in within this area. One is Julius Grove sign, signage. We'd like to have a little more discussion about the signage for the Julius Groves. Ms. Kimbrough is going to be 87 years old. We started this like 15 years ago. Just one, a couple of things that we wanted to let you know and be passionate about since I don't have a lot of time. These projects are about respect, about the common ground that we've already made with the Edwardsville Council. This is like every time we take three steps forward, we take two back. We understand that there's change, but we want to just want to be respectful of those projects. Not to say that it's not happening or that it is. He just gave us an update. The church has always been cooperative, so we're not asking about anything about their pay, but we ask, that was already a deal in motion. And the last time, we were told everything was smooth and moving forward, and there's been, there have been some hiccups. And so we asked Chuck Stites to come out because he's one of the people that started some of the hiccup. I look at him, and you're part of this responsibility of some of the politicians that have been in this area and have been part of it. He's fixed so many things. Thank you, Chuck, for fixing. We're just asking you, let's continue on a positive thing. Fix, no more goats. We had goats out there. As long as the goats don't come back, because that was, we're still, people are like, well, that wasn't disrespectful. It wasn't to you. It was to us, and the council worked through that. Let's pay the church and do whatever we have to to make the project stay alive if possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Stites, 44 South 98th Street, Edwardsville. So I just echo what's been mentioned already. When I was here on the council, we, we started the process of the signage that was going up to 98th Street. I don't know where that is when. I'm not here to criticize anybody, but I am, I'm here to ask that if there's any help that, that I can offer or do to see that that, I mean, gets fulfilled. And then to further the conversation regarding with what folks have stepped up here and said that we do honor and respect what we do have in our community. I'm not sure if there's things that, on the county level, that I'm able to help with, but if there's ideas or thoughts or what, what staff might be able to come and ask, and I can always move it forward and see if there's, there's help that we can get. But, but I'm, but I, again, I'm here to, to just offer my help and my support of the church and also with the African-American cemetery moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just kind of a sidebar, but.
Oh, you'll, you'll have to.
Bill Miller, again. I just wanted to mention that Julius Groves, who we've been kind of talking about and who's, has family members, I believe, buried there at Stony Point, he was inducted into the National Agriculture Hall of Fame this last year. So he's a very well-known, important person in Wyandotte County and, and of course, the city of Edwardsville.
Thank you.
But everybody around us is acknowledging that Edwardville needs to step up.
We'll need, we'll need kind of an order here. So everyone has three minutes. If you have anyone else that would like to share public comments, they'll need to step up to the podium, share your name and address, and then we'll have three minutes for you. Okay? All right. That'll close up our public comments for the, for the day. Thank you all for coming out and sharing those. We don't always have people here to share with us, and so it's nice to have some public input. Thank you for coming. Item number three is consider adopting ordinance 1073, an ordinance adopting the amendment to the Edwardsville Comprehensive Plan. And I believe Bradley is going to give us a quick overview.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, I have Bradley Hoegh-Bever coming up, City Planner. Just to give you a brief summary of, we've had a little time. So just a recap of this whole process, some of the content, and are they all, I'm sorry, are they all, I presume that I would have some update at the end of the formalities here that they may be interested in, but why I talked about them.
I think Commissioner Stites is going to let them know that we'll have updates at the end of the meeting. Yeah, thank you.
So again, sorry for the interruption. We have Bradley, City Planner. He's going to present just the recap of the information, just so you're apprised and up to date, and then ask for approval of the adoption of 1073.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is consider ordinance 1073, the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan. Per state statute, the planning commission is tasked with reviewing the comprehensive plan annually. We decided to approach this review by focusing in on three items before you. The GoDOT plan, which is a countywide transportation plan that really focuses on five core concepts: safety, street design, transit, connections, and investments in opportunity corridors. Locally, the plan identifies K-32 as one of these key opportunity corridors for future investments, which focuses on preserving the rural character of the community and enhancing pedestrian access through sidewalk and trails. The next focused area plan is the Call Valley Plan. Primary goal for this is really to set the stage for a more defined and visionary, visionary future for the Woodin Road Tiff District. What this document does to, it provides a single source for baseline information on anything from the flood-prone areas within that area, development requirements per our zoning regulations, demographic context, and desired uses. The last proposed amendments are text amendments to our, the transportation chapter of our existing comprehensive plan. The 2012 plan included kind of a call to action to create a sidewalk and trails plan that focused on locations within the community where sidewalks and pedestrian trails can be connected to and from with consideration of physical barriers and preferred alignments. Chantel does have the slides from our previous meeting. If there's anything you would like for me to specifically address, or if you have any additional questions, I would be happy to address those. That being said, staff recommendation for the approval of these proposed amendments. And with that, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you, Bradley. And then we also have tonight our Chair of our Planning Commission, Mr. Altavout, is here to share just on behalf of Planning Commission.
Just a couple of things that we wanted to add to this. One of the things that I did want to bring up just regarding our relationship, and Chuck Adams pointed out last year, I think we're going to put the Planning Commission on consent agenda, and he said, no, we need to hear it. And you do. We should not be on your consent agenda. We're an advisory board. We need your feedback. So if we go off the deep end on something, we need that feedback from you. You're the policymakers in this community. We're not. Okay, so that's number one. Now, the second thing I want you to notice in this is that we modified one of these resolutions last year, and that's the YCO GO, is that what? GoDOT, yeah. And what we did with that is that we made that more dynamic. The way we worded it is that any board, any, any new members of the Planning Commission, any new members of the city council can decide for themselves what portion of that that they want to embrace and what part that they want to reject. Now, we have certain things, and I'm going to discuss this, that we've sort of come to that we're not terribly happy with, but that could change. Six years from now, somebody else could come along, have a completely new planning commission, completely new city council, and they could decide to do something else. And this resolution gives them that freedom, because there, there's nothing in there with any specificity that says this is what we want and this is what we don't want. It simply said, we're embracing a portion thereof, and there are parts of it that we don't feel fit in our community. So I want you to take notice of that when you, when you come across that, and Brad, I think, can point that out to you. Now, three of the things that, and I understand some of these may have slipped through, that we were adamant about. Number one is no bus stops. We do not want bus stops in Edwardsville. And Camilla was on the Planning Commission last year when we did this. Another one is we want to restrict, we're not crazy about a lot of access and walking paths and bicycle paths and things coming in from KCK, except for 32. That's a natural corridor through the community, and that would be the appropriate source for that rather than want people wandering into neighborhoods and whatnot from the outside. The third thing is no apartments. And the reason for that, this is sort of tied, there's a thing, and I saw a YouTube video that's actually from England that talked about 15-minute cities. And this is a new concept now. It's part of the woke thing that everybody should ride a bicycle or walk to wherever they go. And, and we can see this up at the Legends where the KCK Planning Commission has basically designed that area to be sort of a 15-minute city, where you have a lot of apartment buildings surrounding a commercial area with shopping and restaurants and things of that nature. And the idea there being that you walk there, you can ride your bicycle or whatever. The thing is that they've overbuilt that for this area. Now, they keep talking about, oh, these are luxury apartments. No, they're not. As soon as they run shy of people to come in there, they start bringing in subsidized rentals. And so that first unit that they have up there along 110th has already become a problem area. They've had a drive-by shooting up there, and they've had other problems. So they have enough apartments up there for more than enough for the area, and I don't think we need those here. So I wanted to bring up those three areas as you go through this plan that perhaps are not suitable for, for this community. And again, I, I welcome your feedback on that.
Do you have a copy of that plan with you? I haven't seen this plan.
I think it's included with what Brad has this evening.
What plan specifically? The one that you're talking about, the whole comprehensive plan.
They should have been, we did it all digital. That thing is very large, if you recall. And then we, and even in some of the correspondence from me specifically, I re-included those links. So you have to go to the link to go on the web. Otherwise, the printing was nearly 600 bucks just for you. So it's, it's a pretty big document just to have it sitting around. We can print it, so if you want to.
No, no, but I would like to have access.
Press on the link. So, yeah, we just sent that both originally, I believe, the links to that, and then the two other correspondence that we had, so you could access it via the computer and PEA.
It's not about six weeks ago?
Yeah.
Several times within the last few weeks, yes, since we first introduced the topic.
I think it's the GoDOT plan that makes up, it's a 500-page document, where the text amendments that speak to the sidewalk and trails plan, that is three pages, adding in some illustrations in the map itself. And then the Call Valley Plan is a 10-page document.
So that's part of the, that's part of the problem, is that we've discussed a lot of these things, but there's, they're so extensive there that it's easy for some of these, these, at least these three items to slip through. And I understand that they have, and on a couple of occasions, slipped through there. And so the, most of what we have, the relevant portions of it, are in the resolutions that, that Brad and the Planning Commission have developed over these matters. And, and again, we're an advisory board. You guys are the policymakers. So these are the three things that we would bring to you that if those remain in there, they should probably be removed.
And I believe in my review of those, that any multifamily or high-density housing's more addressed in the actual base comprehensive plan, not in the GoDOT sidewalks and trails or Call Valley.
Right. And we can go over those this, this year.
Okay.
If you want, we can put that on our agenda and go through that.
Yeah, I think that would be probably a good idea for the next steps, is having Planning Commission with, with our City Planner update, the base of that. And we can, we can move forward with the three additions, but.
Well, we've also assigned staff, we've also assigned Brad to sit down with you and to go through some of these things, the, of areas of concern that you'd like us to take a look at. So, again.
Thank you so much, John. I appreciate it.
Okay, anything further, guys?
Anyone have any other questions or comments on them?
All done? Okay, thank you much. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table item three on the agenda until further review. The Chair of the Planning Commission is sitting here saying there's things that are questionable on it right now, things that they don't like right now, and they're bringing it to us to approve it. So I don't see how we can approve that if they're wanting to make changes on it after it possibly gets approved. So.
Yeah, and I, so we have a couple.
I feel uncomfortable voting for it if I haven't seen it.
If you haven't seen it, that makes sense. And so we do have a few options. While we're, we're considering a table, which would just give us some more time, and we can review and come back and discuss in a couple of weeks. And so options would be to table. We can approve as recommended. We can remit back to Planning Commission, or we can make the adjustments or amendments that were brought to us this evening, or, or any of, any other amendments that we should choose to do that. So we have really four options tonight. Approving recommendations, overriding, which would be making the adjustments as recommended by our Planning Commission Chair, or returning to Planning Commission, and then the fourth option being tabling the item.
I'll rescind the motion and change the motion to return it to the Planning Commission. So what ends, please?
With, with what instructions or?
For the exceptions that they want to make on it, and then to present it to us where we can see those recommendations.
So I, I think that kind of addresses the countywide plan. It's a countywide plan that the county has adopted, but there are aspects of that that may not apply to Edwardsville itself. I don't think that the other two proposed amendments, the Call Valley Plan and the Sidewalk and Trails Plan, those were something that we created infernably, and, you know, at every meeting, we kind of chipped away at those things. But as far as the county, I mean, they approved those plans. We are some way or another involved in those greater plans. But I think what Chairman was trying to address is that, yes, we acknowledge this plan by the county. We see where aspects of that applies to Edwardsville. But there are details within that plan that maybe only specifically apply to the Northeast or elsewhere. But I think that resolution, by then passing that unanimously, we're simply saying, okay, the plan is done. We generally approve this plan, acknowledging that there are aspects within it that may not apply to Edwardsville.
There was some specific verbiage in the resolution that the Planning Commission passed, which gave some, if you will, some exception, that they, they left room to disagree and not adopt everything that they would disagree or they could reconsider. It's kind of framed up in general that way. So they left it. The GoDOT plan is a countywide plan, okay, that in some ways has some connection and or impact with the entire county. And the Planning Commission, as I understood it, did not like some of those aspects. We can't change their plan, but we can say, hey, we're putting up this, a little bit of shelter, if you will, against some of those things, because we're not adopting it into our specific plan. And the language in that resolution that they passed, I believe qualifies to create that situation, if that makes sense.
So we do see, it says, whereas the Edwardsville's Planning Commission recognizes the GoDOT Countywide Strategic Mobility Plan incorporates recommendations that do not apply to the city of Edwardsville and therefore will not be implemented in the city. And I believe that's what we're discussing here. And I, I think they did a great job in making those exceptions, so we're not adopting that full plan. But the Call Valley Commerce Plan and the Sidewalks and Trails Plan, those were internal, and we made those in-house. And those both incorporate a bus stop and connections to Kansas City, Kansas for future planning. And so I believe that is something that our Chairperson was bringing to our attention as well, that the Planning Commission was not really interested in pursuing in the future. Sorry, I had to gather, gather my thoughts quickly, but those were the things that they were hoping that we could address tonight, if possible, to button that up and making those amendments, if possible. And again, Councilman Millatt also mentioned the possibility of remitting to Planning Commission to make those adjustments as well, if we, if we aren't comfortable or willing making those adjustments tonight.
I do think that's the proper procedure, if, that if you decide today during discussion to say, we don't want this particular connection of a sidewalk, we don't want this to even be labeled as a bus stop, then you, you're specifying to remand it back to the Planning Commission for them to make those changes and then re-recommend it. That's what I believe the procedure is.
So when I reviewed it, and you guys can, please feel free to bring your, your comments and discussion, because our Chair did mention that we're the policy-setting board to give them those recommendations. On the public, on page two of the Call Valley Commerce, it says, that public section has a future park and ride public transit stop. And that's where people park their vehicles and get on a bus and ride from there. That was, that was addressed by our Planning Chair. Page five has that bus stop located near the river, which also is out of visibility. If we were going to have one, don't want it there, but I think we're saying it would be better not to. And, and I could elaborate on those static bus stops and, and how they're working out and down on Seventh Street and at the Legends. And it's a crime magnet in both. If we go to the sidewalks and trails, it talks about establishing connectivity for pedestrians over 435 in the future. That would be connecting pedestrian trails to residential areas in Edwardsville. The residents here are not, when we're looking at our sidewalks and trails, from what I've heard of our neighbors and in residents and community, is they do want trails and sidewalks to ride bikes and to walk, you know, with their kids and their families or jog within our community, but not so much interested in providing trails for other communities of these high-density apartment complexes to come use all of our sidewalks and trails. We're not necessarily wanting to invest in other communities or for other communities. Um, we're not necessarily wanting to invest in other communities or for other communities, but for our people here in Edwardsville. And so, um, as sensitively as I can put that, uh, there it is. And then, um, a- as far as, uh, uh, streets or, or biking, we just really want to focus on what we have here in our community and, and doing it with excellence for our city. One thing we would like to keep open, though, is that corridor along K-32 where people, um, walk and try to bike and, and, um, that is the ideal place, that is one of the flattest areas in the entire county, um, to really consider connectivity there and availability for people to walk and bike and jog, especially biking. They used to bike from Kansas City, Kansas all the way up to Lawrence. And so, um, having that a little bit safer of an area, I think, was well-received by our Planning Commission. But those are, those other connections aren't really something that they were wanting to pursue.
So I remember it because I was still on Planning Commission, and I remember, like all, uh, John said, that we were really specific about not having bus stops and not, like, having any connections to Kansas City, Kansas, other than like the sidewalks, um, trails, uh, bike pass on K-32, along K-32. Um, I'd like to consider a motion to, uh, amend the comprehensive plan to include the, these items as presented with amendment and eliminating any bus stops and future connections to Kansas City, Kansas, other than the potential sidewalks, trails, or bike pass along Kitty, K-32, uh, from the comprehensive plan in these three additional documents. But, I mean, I did, I, I, I know that he hasn't been able to look at it, but that's just because I have and I remember this from Planning Commission, so.
And this is kind of what it's all about. This is the, the planning process, the back and forth, um, because at the end of the day, this is, um, a, a document that represents our community and our vision, our desires. And then so, it's really important that we take the time to have these conversations and really hash them out. Um, so if you could...
Go to the Call Valley area, and I believe the bus stop that you have restprints is located here towards the south end of here. Um, when we were putting this together, there was a lot of discussion with YDTC and kind of past conversations they've had with the development community, um, and their need for some sort of form of public transportation for their employees. As a result of those conversations, the, the county launched the, the pilot, the micro-transit pilot program. And so as soon as that launched, we were kind of going through this. And so, um, rather than maybe that bus being parked at the park, this is perhaps a better suitable place for it. Uh, but at the end of the day, I, I think that if, if that is not the vision for the community, that is something that we can easily take back to the Planning Commission, discuss further and make the change, uh, and, and get this, this right.
Um, as far as the sidewalks and trails, um, I think the approach to that was really kind of leveraging other investments and building off of those. Um, but I hear you loud and clear about those, uh, connections, um, into other municipalities. Um, and I think that specific direction is what we'll need to take back to the Planning Commission, uh, to get that, um, that corrected. So I have no objections to the, the recommendations you all made tonight, um, and, uh, I'll leave it to you to make the decision moving forward, but...
Thank you, Bradley. And I, I did want to mention that, um, the micro-transit, I think, is the, the solution that we found that, that works so well. It's a good balance with EDC. I believe Commissioner Seitz was also a, a vital part in getting that to Edwardsville. Um, and, and you're working with the EDC as well, Bradley, but having that to where people, it's almost like an Uber where people say, hey, we need a ride, they cook, pick them up, bring them to the bus stop or bring them to our, um, industrial park, which is fantastic. But that, um, it, it doesn't leave the, the, the loitering, the, the litter, the, um, the other things that have come up with the more traditional, uh, bus stops. And so, um, thank you for your efforts and I, I do appreciate that. Um, just to clarify, I believe we can make an, we can either remit it to Planning Commission or we can make an amendment, um, for a vote.
Under number three.
Under number three. And we have two motions, um, one to remits planning and then one to make an amendment. And so we would just need a second on either, um, motion.
Start with the first.
Bradley has a comment.
Yeah, and I will say this would, we, we have two new members of the Planning Commission. Um, and I think this would be, if you all choose to, to take it back to the Planning Commission, I think this would be a great opportunity to kind of introduce them to this process and kind of get them up to speed, uh, regarding the amendments that were made last year. Um, so again, I, I'll take your direction, but as I said, this might be a good opportunity for them as well, so.
I'm going to go ahead and second Mr. Millatt's motion.
To remit planning?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have the information you need for going back to planning?
I believe so. Um, just so I'm clear, um, and I can be clear to those members of the Planning Commission, um, the public transportation component of the Call Valley Commerce Plan and then, uh, the Sidewalk and Trails Plan, uh, connections to adjacent municipalities, um, with the exception of the...
So the apartments are in the comprehensive plan that they haven't brought to us yet, but, but you could make a note of that for, for when you get to the comprehensive plan. I think that would be a great idea.
I understood, we're going to review that and then bring that as we go through the plan review, and it's done annually, so you'll hear this every year, with some changes.
So we have a motion by Councilman Millatt, the second by Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call roll?
Schrader.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullin. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do I get to vote?
Okay, hold on.
So quiet. Okay, so, um, we are down to item four, city manager report. Um, while we're in the city manager report, if you have some updates for any of the residents here from earlier, um, from the public comment, feel free to do that, or if we want to, to follow up with them via email or, or something, that would be okay as well.
Yeah, we have to be careful. Some of the discussion happened in executive session, therefore we're not talking about real estate transaction or anything like that. What I can tell you is we've been very, very active in bringing some resolution to access and to maintenance. Those are the kind of the key things. And so, access, we've always had, where are the other? We, we've had a, a good sharing relationship with the church, uh, and we've also have legal access through our easement through Williamson Farms on that side. And we also have legal parking, which is in that Coliseum Stack as well, 105th right there, that you can park there legally and you can walk up to that. So until we, we bring some resolve to the other pieces of, there's nowhere else to park if you're coming from the St. Martin of the Field set, there's no place to park, okay? And so, the parking has been there in the Coliseum, but the access have been whatever, we've kind of meandered around or something, but it's, it's different ways. Our plan right now is to ensure access, both to staff, as well as anybody who wants to visit there, and that we are, we have a routine maintenance plan moving forward. There are, uh, I understand there's some rush items, there's some, you know, leaves and all the stuff that needs to be taken care of. It's not spring yet, folks, so we're, we're getting there, we're, you know, so now we have an idea of where the easement sits and how we would be able to access it and leave it in its natural state, nature, right? In a sense of, we're not, we're not putting bolts down rock path or anything. It's from the Williamson Farms side along the easement, uh, you can access that with a slight hill, it's, but it's been accessible from there for quite a long time. And we will trim that up to about an eight-foot section. That, that eight foot will move to the, more like the west, rather than encroaching upon, uh, some of the foliage and things, uh, along the property owners' side there. Uh, we have a couple of property owners that do a real good job of keeping that open and that sort of thing. We're going to put a little sign, little pass, the first piece of property that's right there on the corner, and that delineates and says, "The Stony Point." The official name of that historic cemetery is Stony Point. And that was also adopted at the City Council as the official name as well, after learning, uh, it's been several years now, we had a presentation, uh, I believe the cemetery president at the time had done lots of research and we've received some official paperwork, I believe from the military. Uh, we couldn't find that piece of document, but, uh, that named that Stony Point Cemetery. People get confused because that's named somewhere out, I believe in KCK or somewhere, so it's a little confusing, but that's the official name. And so we're going to put that, a little arrow or something that says, hey, this is the trail, and then you can walk up there. Then the maintenance plan is going up there, uh, every, every few days, once a week, going up there, make sure everything's in order, and it already is delineated by some signage that says, uh, I think cemetery boundary or something. There's four points of signage that's up there, little bit of signs that kind of delineate that particular piece of property. So that's our maintenance plan. They're already going to have some hand tools, more likely, where we, we're not going to take big mowers and things. We want to keep it natural, uh, clear it by hand and using some, you know, saws and some of this other business, you know, and, and we need, there's like, I think, cutters and things like that. So that's what we're going to do, they're going to check on it, make sure it's, uh, routinely that, that people can get to. That's our start, that's our first place to start. The rest of it, we just have to decide what our priorities are. Uh, if, if I could get into some of that in the sense of, we appreciate, uh, the, the long, long-standing relationship with the church. Uh, again, we do have a parking problem on that side. If you have an access on that side, then the parking is encouraged on the road, and that just doesn't really work. You know, there is a, you know, on the, on the Edwardsville Drive side, so, right with the west, there is a drive cut, if you will, approach that's there, but you can, one or two cars, but maybe squeak off the road there. Uh, we, we'd rather have, where you have an abundance of public parking, because you can get four or five cars if you have a ceremony or something, you just want to have a family that goes up there and there's three or four cars. So that will accommodate that law of public, okay? So on, on the, on the Williamson Farms side, with, there, from talking with the, the residents just in that median area, they don't see a large volume of just folks coming and parking and going up there. So like, right now, it's not intrusive, but if it comes to that point, then we'll just take a different, different approach if we have to, and some way to manage it. But right now, we want the access and we want, in, in good order, we want the cemetery to be in good order, so you can go up there, you can visit, pay your respects, so we want to do those things. Julius Grove signs, we talked about those. We, we've been on these things, uh, for several weeks now. We, we know where the signs are. You remember, you've been on the council, uh, you ordered signs. And they did, they were ordered, they were printed, and they were delivered, but they were put into storage and they, they've been seen since. We found them in the last, uh, few days, several days, and we're getting a plan of how to connect them. They're a little, they're big, they go on the top of a street sign, you know, on the top, uh, we're going to put them at, uh, across from the official signs on 98th Street, K-32, so that Grove, Julius Grove, you know, kind of township or town home, uh, homestead area, sorry, uh, and then, uh, I think Steel Road is the next one, try to think of my roads here. But there will be a couple of signs and they're, they're fairly large. So that would delineate kind of that homestead area that they had, and we're trying to coordinate that with, uh, the birthday of the longstanding citizen that wanted to see that come to fruition.
April 17.
What, what day is that?
April 17.
April 17. We were thinking May, so, but we can, if, if it's okay with everybody, that we didn't have a real date in mind, I just thought I'd heard previously, May, so...
May, Chris.
So we could do, uh, towards that middle, April, a nice day and just have a little ribbon-cutting ceremony, that's what was planned. So as long as we can get the brackets and, and the things in place, we can have this done very soon. We have the signs, that's the first key. So they're already printed, ready to go. So we've been on this, uh, for quite some time now, so again, uh, I've, I've talked with Mr. Miller a few times now, we've had some correspondence, and some of that is just, just a, not necessarily, what, what we have to think about is, we have parks now, right? And it's, it's been difficult to invest in those, not only just our financial resources, but our overall just labor resources. How do we take care of those? How do we improve those for the everyday use without taking on more and, and, you know, the mowing and some of these other things? And so are we just going to go in and acquire a piece of property that now all we're doing is maintain? Because again, we'll have to build parking, so this goes beyond just one acquisition, goes beyond, so we have to just think about those things as we've already talked about. And so it's nothing against anybody, uh, it's just more of, we have to, we do have to make business-like decisions in these kind of cases. We want to access, we want to keep it clean, and we're going to do that part of it. And then we'll move forward with these other things as the council sees their priority and lets me know what that is, and then we can, we can kind of restart. As far as the, kind of the legal piece of this, which is the replat, uh, though you did vote on that, uh, around, uh, let's see, I should go over here, May 22nd, 2023, uh, paper trail here, is that it was never replatted, it was never filed. So though you said it's okay, uh, because of, of the other negotiations, it's kind of a, not necessarily a stop, or, but we took a step back, and so that was never officially done, so there's, it has not been replatted, though it's been approved.
And I thought that was more for, for review, so we could see numbers and how that would look. If I remember right, it's been a while.
There was, yeah, this is...
It was more preliminary.
Again, we got new people, new faces, new names, that sort of thing, and that's okay, but we had, you know, uh, we did a lot of work in the spring of 2023, trying to work on the replat and some of this, and we communicated and, and, uh, you know, again, some of those are, are in the closed-door session, uh, about, like, appraisal and all of that's been done. Uh, but it's, I think, again, we just took a step back so we could review things like labor, things like, well, how much does it cost to build a car, how big should that be, right? What is, what are these other things? And we have those as an alternative already, it exists. And so I thought that was the best way to go for now. We can have more discussion with our, our CPPS Board, as well as the council, about what, what are the priorities? And again, we're not lowering the priority here. In fact, we're giving access as much as we can, and the parking is right there. You're actually closer to the access than going all the way.
Thank you for the update on that, and I think it's, it's great to hear that we have an actual maintenance plan in place. I have been there, um, at some of the cleanups personally, helping pull weeds and, and haul stuff out of there, and, um, it, it was discouraging, you know, you do a big cleanup and then six months later, it's all grown up again. And so to have an actual maintenance plan in place, I think is a great, um, step forward. And so, uh, we'll, we'll hear from you how that's going and get some updates as we go.
I thought, I thought the plan was to embrace it, no different than our, our city cemetery, if you will, and so this is what we care for, this is how we care for it, so we're going to go that way.
Did you have anything else you wanted to share with us?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay, um, council comments, Councilman Mullin. Councilman Millatt?
Thank you for coming. Uh, I mentioned something about the cemetery reform meeting to go, and I have been in discussion with Bill Miller on that, and it, it is a matter of interest to me to make sure something good happens up there. I think the church has been more than gracious with us in the past on allowing access to that. I think that we should continue to try and negotiate with that church and see if we can figure out some kind of way of rectifying this whole situation, because it will just sit up there and decay if we don't do something about it. Sometimes you got, you know, when you say priorities, that is a priority to me, something like that for the history of this town and the history of the people that are up there and all of that. Also, I think Mark, Mark Bishop said something the other day about that area down there off 98th Street and Steel Road on the house that's down there now, that maybe we should be thinking about doing something down in that area for the, for the Groves and the Kimbrows and all of them that are down there. So I'd like to have some of that discussion, maybe start it up a little bit between us with that. We have, uh, trash bags on the silent crossings signs. Have you had a response back from the letter that you sent?
No, it's a, the red tape of the railroad, so it probably takes a little bit of time with that. I mean, it's one step closer, uh, to getting that, that's, that would be the only report I have on the silent crossing, is the letter was sent and there's some trash bags on signs.
Well, the thing that, I think that the letter must have made the engineers mad because they're louder now than they were three weeks ago. I would definitely like to see something really happen on that, it's just annoying this can be. Um, I did notice that, this is silly, $250 bill to Union Pacific Railroad for an easement or an access to something, what is that?
That's an annual payment that we make, I'm, I'm only familiar with it from asking in the past, that, uh, we, it's, it's, we've had those roads that will drive beside the railroad, and, yeah, they're, but there is still some sort of access easement that we have.
Well, and if they, they... Well, then, if they, they need to quit driving the cross our property up there to get to their railroad tracks and leave. On the northeast corner of, of the railroad. I'm old, I get to complain about that.
Okay. But they can do that, yes.
I noticed that our website has not been updated for quite a while. We've got the previous council members on it, and is our official city newspaper now the website, or is it still the Echo? There's a lot of things that are wrong on the website. And I think if we're paying them the money to do that, maybe they should catch it up and do it the way it should be done.
Maybe, maybe I'm a little confused. On the publications, that's, our, our newspaper, we don't write articles and things to the, to the website. We post things that are the official things, that we, that are required to be posted.
On the website.
On the website, under publication.
It says on there, the official, subscribe to the official, on the hot shot, it says subscribe to the official city newspaper, which is the Echo. I don't know, there's something confusing about that.
Okay.
Well.
Okay.
And once again, I wanted to thank, make sure that we thank Bill Miller and the ladies from the NAACP, I didn't catch her names, but for coming tonight.
And this is our senior warden, I'm sorry, this is.
Oh. Anybody that's here that is representing. I've been here my whole life, and I knew that was up there a long time ago, so.
All we got? Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Shire.
I too would like to thank all the guests that came and spoke tonight. I've been part of the CPPS board, Parks Board, for several, several years, and I know we've been working on this, and we've gone back and forth. Like our city manager said, we've got, there are a lot of conversations happened in executive sessions, but I know we are going to work towards a proper access for everybody, I should say. That, I know it's going to add to our public works, but spring is coming and, but it does need to be cleared away, but hopefully we can come to a resolution. And thank you all for coming. I'd like to thank Commissioner Seitz for coming and being an active voice for anybody that comes to you for help, so thank you. I want to bring back up something. I know I've, I've talked about this and I, if my memory serves me, the, the sign, the marque, is it a marquee sign? You know, the, was that purchased? Or I know there was money earmarked. Things have gotten, I, this is, this is in conjunction with, we don't have a newspaper. Not everybody accesses the website or the hot shot, but I know I've said this for years now, I just, I know there's not the most perfect place to, to have the sign to announce these things. We've got, you know, the citywide garage sale, the citywide cleanup, we've got several things coming up, so is that something somebody could research?
Yes.
Where that sat, where, I thought there was money earmarked, or it was bought.
Purchased the mobile sign.
Right.
Saw that.
Right.
Not very graphic, if you will.
Right, but they looked at something permanent.
That, the permanent sign, we talked about, you think about the church on that northwest corner.
Right.
There was some right away that we probably could have, we looked at that, but that's a little bit of K-Doc, it's complex again, when you, K-Doc, but the way it's designed wouldn't sustain that particular sign, the sign that we were looking at, more of the permanent.
Could somebody maybe investigate or just get some ideas together?
That was true. First, talked about who cares fund.
Right.
And somewhat discussed through ARPA funding, and there, I don't know the exact cost. What I did read, that's why it's popped up on my radar, is that Bonner Springs did a, some digital signage, exterior digital signage somewhere. And I was actually going to call them and see.
Oh, okay.
What company they use, we can get an idea. Because what, where, where we might think something would go, maybe somebody has a different idea, a different sign idea.
Right.
You know, so we haven't brought anybody in to do that for us. So I think that would be at least the first step.
I just think it would be helpful. There's a lot of, I think, events or announcements that, that people just simply don't see because they don't have access or they don't go to the internet for that information. So if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Adcox? Okay, I'll keep it brief. Wanted to thank our planning commission chair, Mr. Alstavot, for being here this evening and visiting with us regarding the comprehensive plan. Commissioner Seitz, thank you for being here and sharing with us. And the micro-transit just happened to come up tonight, but that, that was something he really spent some time on and making sure we were included in, so thank you for that. We had some visitors here from outside the community, but also residents from in the community. And so never want to miss an opportunity to thank our residents for being here this evening as well and, and being a part of our meeting tonight. Last Saturday, we had our Edwardsville Mobile Pantry Event, and so I'll give some, share some numbers. Our registration was a little bit lower this time, so hopefully that means people aren't quite as in much need, but it, it also could be because January, we got froze out. And so we were kind of out of, out of the routine of, of signing up, but we had 186 households sign up, 248 adults, 236 children, 105 seniors that we were able to provide groceries for. That was 13,942 pounds of food. And they also sent our 2023 review, which I thought was really interesting. In 2023, our volunteers were able to serve 1,300 households, 4,498 individuals, 1,921 adults, 1,740 children, 837 seniors, 88,950 pounds of food. And so that would equate about 67,458 meals. And based on their estimates, that would be about $156,233 worth of groceries. And so I just wanted to take a moment and thank our faithful volunteers. We partner with the city, with harvesters, with Edwardsville Christian Church, but we just couldn't do it without everybody working together for our residents in our community. It really, it really makes a big difference in not only the groceries, but we're able to encourage people as they come through and just build into their lives a little bit. And so it's a great opportunity to serve. Thank you all for being here tonight. Have a good week.